And it shows, and it pays. And I am very grateful, Gabe, for the work that you do, and very appreciative of what you've done to your organization and how you've given back to our community. So I just want to say personally, thank you very much.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I took the words out of my mouth. It's so like you, Gabe, to share that, any recognition, you know, with others and not take it yourself, but you're going to have to accept a little bit of responsibility here, sir. And admit that as the leader, you've done a fantastic job in organizing folks and in growing your organization, very purposely, but with a singular purpose in mind. And I think that is your strength, and we really appreciate you. And I just have to add that bringing the convention here was many kudos to you, and it topped off what I was calling "Super Week" in Tulare County. So we appreciate you very much, and thank you and your entire organization for all that you do.
I'll be brief. I can remember some of those meetings where we had five or six people show up the first years I was on the board, and what a great influence that organization has been in the county. And I continue to say the wonderful good you do by providing the scholarships to get those kids assistance at the school that they need. So congratulations on, and also you're moving further along in the state and national organization. And thank you for all that you do. The children of this county will benefit for many decades to come because of your efforts today. Thanks, Gabe.
Gabe, I got two words: enthusiasm and energy. I just wish I could get your energy, because even though you had the knee surgery during the convention, you worked through it, and nobody really knew it. So you have that enthusiasm and energy, I think, that we all need to make things happen, and you've done a wonderful job. And also, thank you for your support when I was running through the Latino Peace Officers. It was a big help to me. Thank you.
I've noticed he's a little bit younger than you, too. Thank you very much, Gabe. Okay, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. Are there any items that the board wishes to address separately? If not, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve consent calendar.
Second.
That includes the addendum, correct?
Including addendum number one.
Moved and seconded. Cast your vote. Vote, most in carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, moving to untimed items. Item number 26. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Item number 26 is a request from the District Attorney's Office to authorize the acceptance of a grant that we've received from the United States Department of Justice under the COPS program. Provides $450,000. They essentially would fund over about a two-year, two-and-a-half-year period two prosecutors who would focus on the methamphetamine trade. The intent of the program is another step in what we've been trying to accomplish with some other programs, of moving our prosecutors closer and closer to the police agencies in the field who are addressing particular problems. This is a project called Project A Full Court Press, where we actually hope to be able to embed prosecutors with narcotics teams, with local agencies. One of the things that probably would be of interest and is also something that we're trying to address is that the methamphetamine trade moves into a lot of different areas that one doesn't anticipate immediately. It's not just the trade in narcotics, the funding that might go into some other kinds of activities, but we know from studies that have been done in other counties, and specifically information that we're getting out of San Diego County, that up to 75 percent of our paper cases, identity theft cases, are somehow related to methamphetamine trade. And so by having the prosecutors move closer and closer to the police agencies, identify these cases, whether or not they're white-collar crime, or they're narcotics, or cases of violence, we can hopefully be able to combine our efforts and focus our efforts in that area. Thank you. Do we have any questions?
Just real, I went through this and marked this thing up. I think this is a great program, great focus. It talks about developing community-wide, community-based solutions. I think this is something that we're seeing with the gang task forces that have been formed over the last year throughout the county, that this is the way to fight crime, and forming these relationships. I've seen, you know, your office do that quite a bit in the last year or so, and I want to commend you for that. I think this is a thinking-out-of-the-box kind of a way of doing things, and it looks to be, and I've heard you folks say before, the way to fight crime in the future, to do it together, partner, and I'm excited about this. I think this looks to be a very promising program.
entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved. Hit the button now. Moved and seconded. Please cast your vote. Vote. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Klein.
Thank you, guys.
Boy, the crowd gets thinner and thinner. Thank you. We'll move to item 27, Resource Management.
Chairman Ashida, members of the board. My name is John Drew, Assistant Director of Transportation and Resource Management Agency. This is a request that your board authorize the submittal of the Safe Out to School Grant Application to the state in an amount of $194,000 to construct sidewalk and install flashing beacon near Monson-Sultana School. RMA Traffic Division has been working closely with the school superintendent, Tom Giampietro, in developing a Safe Out to School Plan. We also had a public meeting last month to discuss several options of this project. I have a couple of slides to show you on the proposed plan. Safe Out to School Project, the purpose of this project is to provide safe pedestrian route for schoolchildren, and also provide ADA compliant sidewalk for people with wheelchair, and also encourage walking and bicycling to school. The project that we're proposing is to construct sidewalk, drive approach, wheelchair ramp, update walkway to current standard ADA act. The funding is with the state. Present before your board is a proposed plan that the community and the school official have indicated their support. This is a plan to provide a safe pedestrian route for schoolchildren. The project will consist, again, consist of constructing sidewalk on the south side of Avenue 416, drive approach, wheelchair ramps on the south side of Avenue 416, and also installing camp levers, flashing beacons, and also flashing beacons on the school speed signs. Avenue 416 is a highly-traveled road, has over 9,000 vehicles, and this, the approach speed to the school zone is 45 miles an hour, and in the school zone is 25 miles an hour. And Monson-Sultana School is just south of Avenue 416, in this area right here. The student lives on the north side of Avenue 416, must cross at this, in this school, existing school, school crosswalk right here, and as much as 80 students in a one-hour period counts that, you know, that we show, that's using this crosswalk. Once crossing, once crossing this sidewalk, they use the existing walkway right along here, and it's very narrow, at some places as much as only two-and-a-half feet wide. As you can see right through some of these photos right here, the challenge that we're facing with in trying to remove some of the obstruction, fences, rose bushes, and right here, this is about two-and-a-half feet wide. So, and also on the next slide, there's also a tree that's, actually, I was told, this is a landmark of Sultana.
It's the only tree.
So we're going to find, at the request of the resident, we're going to try to save this tree, so we're going to build it around the trees without design exception here. So the grant, again, the grant is for $194,000 in the state fund, and the state will share 90 percent of the cost, and the other 10 percent is going to be, remaining 10 percent is going to come from the Community Development Workforce Housing Reward Program funding. If the state is going to award this project, it's going to be sometime in February of 2008, and construction could, if we get the grant, construction could start as much as 2008 of summer. Also with me today is school superintendent, Tom Giampietro, and I believe Tom would like to add a few comments to, in support of this application.
First of all, I would like to thank RMA for all the work they've done with the school district on this project, and John Ciccarelli and the University of California for the initial study that was done about two-and-a-half years ago. As you've heard, the crosswalk is insufficient in terms of safety to our children at this point. As Cutler-Rosi has grown, and Inuba has grown, we have experienced much more traffic coming through that crosswalk. The district currently provides its own crossing guard in that area each and every day during the hours in which children will be coming and going home, coming to school and then going home. And then on foggy days, the district provides a bus downtown so that the children do not have to walk across that bus walk, because one person in the middle of the street has not been sufficient to stop the traffic. You know, I would like the board to consider the request, and thank you for your time.
Back to the board.
Chairman, I just wanted to also commend the RMA staff. We had a public meeting on this matter, and I think half the RMA staff were present, and Mr. Henry was there, and John, and lots of other folks, and they were very attentive. This is kind of a unique situation. When you look at the school site, it fronts against ag property, so that's where you have your 25-mile speed zone, because that's the, that is the road that is in front of the school, but that's not the distance that children walk. So when the engineers looked at this, their initial reaction was, well, we should have the space where they cross where you have the 25-mile speed zone. Fact of the matter is, there's probably not one car in a hundred that's going 25 in front of the school, because they're still, see, they're coming, at 55-mile speed zone, they're coming through, and they're approaching an intersection where they have to stop in downtown Sultana. So the smarter place for this crosswalk to be is where it is going to be, and that is closer to the downtown area, because people do have to slow down there because of the stop sign. Our, the staff is very attentive to the public comments, and the preferred approach actually was changed because of that public hearing, and I think they came up with the right decision in what they're recommending. And so I wanted to thank the staff and appreciate the school's activity, actively being involved in this process as well. This is, I can't help but say, but my children are the third generation of our family to attend this school, so I do know a little something about the area. But this will certainly be a great safety feature. As has been stated, this is a very heavily-traveled road, and at the time that children are going to school, frequently people are traversing this road on their way to and from work, and sometimes a little bit late in getting to work, and so they tend to be traveling a little bit fast. So this is, this is a very much needed project, and no doubt will save people's lives and be a huge safety factor for the community. So, thanks. And if there are no other comments, Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to move approval.
I have one quick one. I agree wholeheartedly with you. I've been out there working a few times, and I don't think anybody drives 25 miles now out there. It's 45, 55, or even faster. And I would encourage staff that if you're not awarded the Safe Schools Grant, that you find the money elsewhere to do it, because, you know, I always have this in the back of my mind, what's the cost of a life? Well, let's hope it's not $194,000.
There is sort of a backup plan here, but hopefully we won't have to use that one.
Good. You know, I'd like to commend RMA, too. They also did a project this year at Sunnyside Elementary School in Strathmore. And because we've been a rural community, and a lot of our schools are actually been built on rural roads, but the growth that we've had and the increase in traffic, it's, I think, is, I'm very pleased that we are finally addressing this issue. So I'd like to thank John and RMA for their diligence in fixing some of the safety issues around schools.
Move, I move approval, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Moved and seconded. Please cast your vote. Most in carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to take up item two that was on the addendum. It pertains to the abandonment of 30.37-mile segment of railroad between Strathmore and the community of Joe Vista, or Stop and Joe Vista.
Is it Joe Vista or Ho Vista?
Ho Vista. My Japanese accent.
Joe Vista sounds better.
The reason we're bringing this before the board is that there's going to be a petition filed to abandon this railway, and I think many of us who grew up in this valley remember during the '60s and '50s when we used to pack railroad cars full of fruit. And since that point in time, it happened in the late '60s and early '70s, we had some transportation problems with the railroad, and so that's burned the truck traffic. We start shipping a lot of fruit through, over the highways instead of the rails. But with the consolidations of the grocery stores and the retailers, which have distribution centers, I believe that rail definitely has the potential to come back and be an important part of the distribution system of goods movement. And I also think that a lot of our communities are looking at increasing rail opportunities in their industrial parks. I think it's good planning. The more cars, rail cars we use, that means the less trucks we have on the road. If we lose this rail track, it would basically cut off the city of Porterville, which is a major city on this line. And I do know that there's still rail users that are in Lindsay that depend on the rail to bring in bulk plastic and other items. So if you lose a segment of it, you're cutting off the north segment of this whole rail line. So I think it's extremely important to keep it intact, and if we have the opportunity to weigh in and say that we want to keep the railroad intact, I believe that's what we should do as a board. So I would bring it back for other comments.
Chairman, I fully agree with the request to oppose this abandonment. I do think, however, we need to look at economic development as being a critical part of this. We can't expect a railroad company to continue to maintain a road that no one's using, and that is a key part of this. If we can increase the utilization of this rail, there'll be no need to abandon it, no desire to abandon it. But, but when you look at the use that's being made of this road currently, I can certainly understand the railroad's desire to abandon it. So I, I think we need to oppose this, but simultaneously, we need to be looking at our own economic development and the incorporated communities, and encouraging the city of Porterville, for instance, that they would actively plan their development and growth in such a way that would encourage and anticipate the use of rail, because we, again, we cannot expect people to maintain systems that no one's using.
We had two major industrial expansions in the last two years of my district in Exeter.
And rail was critical of those.
Rail was the item that sold the properties to be expanded, and that was Peninsula Packaging and Warehouse on the west side of Exeter.
And I know in another instance where La Prino Cheese Factory looked very strongly at locating in Goshen, and ultimately ended up in Lemoore, and critical of their decision going out there was a promise, and a completion of that promise, that the rail be upgraded. So we know there's a demand for rail. I'm just saying we've got to be much more aggressive as a county and as cities. If we're going to keep rail, we have to, we've got to provide them with a business that would justify the rail's continued existence.
In addition to that, flipping through this packet here, looking at the pictures, I would think part of the reason they're wanting to abandon this section also is because they've got some 100-year-old bridges here that look like they need to be replaced. So, you know, I, I know they're going to be looking somehow for some help there with that as well as I look at this, so I'm going to agree with everything you said. I support opposing this. As I look at this, I wonder about the economic feasibility. If you don't increase the usages of this rail system, they're not going to be able to replace these bridges.
I know the lumber, lumber companies in Porterville, and I think that Keith Brown in Lindsay, too, using this quite a bit when the building boom was going, but since the housing's backed off, the trust company in Porterville, I don't see the lumber coming in like it was, but they were getting three or four carloads every two weeks. So it was, it was a big business. And the sawmill, I think, to an extent, Sierra Forest Products continues to use, to use this railroad. So, well, of course, and I agree with Phil, too, on the maintenance. The whole line actually is in shambles as far as the ties, the rails, and of course the bridges, there is a lot of, a lot of problems there. But I am in support of, of keeping that railroad, because I think it's a real asset to the east side of the valley.
Do we, do we have any other suggestions for them, other than don't close it?
Well, they're not, they're not proposing exactly to close it, but the company that apparently is buying it is a scrapper, a salvage company.
Salvage company.
They don't actually, we don't, they operate any railroads, do they? They just buy them up and salvage them.
Steel right now is such a high demand that they will fake the rails and sell them as salvage.
Ship them to China.
Well, I agree, once something's gone, you know, you're not going to get it back, but I would like to think that we would have some, something more proactive than don't close it.
Well, I think initial part of the--
Are people still using it?
Well, yeah, they're still using it to a certain extent, but they say that's wavered
since the building industry has slowed down.
But the plastics part in Lindsay, they still need the tankers to come in.
But they have access, this portion that they're, our concern is kind of twofold. If they abandon this portion of it, then how much longer before they go up and abandon the rest of it? So that, there is that concern. But I certainly, you know, I can't state enough, we, the goal here, we have to oppose this, because the petition is before the regulatory agency to make this transition, and we want to oppose it. But I do think, that's why I think we need to come back also from an affirmative standpoint, and that's not really the time or place to do that now.
I understand.
But we've got to get some, we've got, the idea is to preserve these rights of way and preserve this line, that if we're planning on using this line more extensively, they'll, it'll be there for us to use. And I remember when we talked about Road Department, one, one truck, fully loaded, is equivalent of, what, 4,000 cars in terms of its impact on our roadway? So every truck we get off the road and put on this rail is protecting our road system. So we have a vested interest from that respect, but also I think the idea, as Alan has indicated, that, you know, you've got different industries that say, well, do you have rail? And if the answer is no, they're not even going to look at you. And so if we're expecting growth in Porterville and that would utilize rail systems, I mean, they've got to be able to have it, and then they've got to be out trying to get businesses to come into their community that will use that rail system.
But Supervisor Worthy brings up the most important point, though, is that you also have to provide them opportunity, and that's why we, we suggest that we go to the cities in our districts, when they're doing their general plan review, that they need to allow that industrial impact to help support the rail. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this item? Okay, entertain a motion.
Chairman, I would move that we adopt the resolution of opposition.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Please cast your vote. Motion carries unanimously. I'd say that was a great time. We're going to take item number two, a public hearing. Supervisor Cox will have to accuse himself.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would accuse myself of this, and Mr. Gray and myself. We've had several business dealings together over the last 20-plus years, so I will recuse myself of this matter. Don't forget to come get me, though.
Mr. Chairman, I was the board, and George Trinney with Resource Management Agency. Item number two is against a public hearing pertaining to establishment of a farmland security zone. We only had one application for farmland security zones this year, and this is the one before you. It's 19.82 acres in size, just under your 20-acre minimum, so what they're doing is they're expanding an adjacent farmland security zone under the same ownership, to bring that farmland security zone up to about, just a little less than 60 acres. The property is within three miles of two spheres of influence of cities, both Visaya and Farmersville, and it is in prime agricultural use, so therefore it does qualify for farmland security zone treatment. Again, just to refresh your memories, farmland security zones, this is the 20-year Super Williamson Act program that was adopted by the state, and you've been implementing it since 1999. All the property involved is in agricultural use. There are three residences, which does exceed the minimum established for farmland security zones, but it's a pre-existing use, and the zone regulations allow for continuation of those residences. Otherwise, the property's all in walnuts. That's my report, unless there's any questions.
Public hearing, like to open a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address this matter, please come forward. Seeing no one, we were going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Approval, Mr. Chairman?
Been moved and seconded. Please cast your vote.
Kind of a weak second.
Supervisor Conway, can you push yours again?
Again?
Thank you.
Motion carries four to zero with Supervisor Cox accusing himself. Okay, next item is a request from Resource Management Agency. Mr. Kendall.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Bruce Kendall, County Code Compliance Manager. My assistant's not here, he's trying to-- Manager. My assistant's not here. He's trying to bring the Remmers in. This matter before you is the subject of an appeal from the Remmers of one year ago, September 26, 2006. The board had granted a one-year extension of time for the Remmers to provide for the abatement of the violations on their property. For their appeal, their appeal consisted of, there consisted of three items. We're going to appeal the fines and fees that were imposed from a decision through a previous administrative hearing. Also, the Remmers were asking for the board to waive the $300 filing fee for this appeal. And today, we're back here to take care of that continued matter. In order to obtain a translator for the Remmers, this appearance before your board today had to be delayed. We were supposed to be here on September 27, 2006, excuse me, 2007. But the translators are difficult to find now for, for the Remmers. But I do want to tell the board today...
Go ahead, Steve.
...do want to let the board know today that the abatement on this property has been taken care of. This is through a combined effort of the RMA Code Compliance Staff, RMA Redevelopment. It was a training effort by CSET, the Early Mark Redevelopment District, on able to be able to take care of any future abatements. It was a learning technique that we were going through here. We were teaching CSET how to remove dangers in substandard buildings and abatement of violations on the property. These are the photographs taken during the abatement. As you can see, there was a very large effort to be able to take care of this. And I do very glad to report to you that the abatement is completed. As of now, the property is now totally clean.
Hi, Steve.
Mr. Cox.
Do you have a question? Notice in the, in the staff report, so there was a combined effort between RMA, TCRA, and CSET, who actually paid the fees of, the dump fees and things of that nature. I know as a contractor, when I haul a bin away, it can cost me, you know, $200 to $400. Who actually paid for the fees?
I've approached the county solid waste division, asked for waiver of the fees during this training aspect of CSET. Redevelopment provided a training fund for CSET to be, out of the Early Mark Redevelopment Agency, to be able to handle this type of abatement project. It was a learning tool. But as for the dump fees, they were waived.
Were there any direct county costs?
Redevelopment funds, I have Mr. Bill Hader here who could probably address that a little better than I can. But redevelopment funds were utilized here, but that is not county funds. I did have one of my staff members on site to add direction on what had to be cleaned up.
Another question. Do we know what the value of the site is? Apparently, they refinanced their property to pay a $1,050 fee. What's the value of the site? Does this seem the value of the site?
This site's in Teveson. It's a depressed area of our county, as you're quite aware of. I believe it's just under five acres of property in size. The property is not productive. There is one single-family dwelling on the site that is occupied by the property owners, the Remmers.
No, it's three.
I take this, three residences on this. Oh, three acres?
Three acres.
Three acres. It's been a long time since I've had dealings in real estate, but I imagine real estate in Teveson is valued at $8,000 per acre. In a residential site, maybe $50,000. And then the value of the house, so there's not much value there.
Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Kendall was speaking over something that the translator was saying at the back. A judicial comment by Mrs. Remmer.
It was a little bit over three acres.
Translator said it was a little over three acres.
Over three acres, thank you. Want to make sure it gets on the tape.
Mrs. Remmer says it's three acres, and Mr. Remmer says it may be a little bit over three.
Okay.
I stand corrected.
Mr. Chairman, this is just one of those, you know, when this came before us last time, I want to thank staff again for, for stepping in and trying to find some creative way to, to make this a reality. Because if they hadn't of, it would have been another year, and this would have come back to us, and you see the condition that the property would have been in. They came to me, you know, we tried to think of a way to, to make this, to make this happen in a way that works for everybody. Of course, now, the question is, we are, we have a cleaned-up property. And I guess what staff is looking for is next steps, direction next. I don't know that I have that.
Can I chime in? I, you know, we've expended some real funds. You know, the county has expended real funds. I would consider it a gift of public funds if we were to just go out and, and gift this. I know there's a fine in place. I wonder if we actually know what our hard costs are. I would be willing to look at the fine versus the hard cost. And, you know, I know the hard costs are not $300. You had staff there that are paid by the hour. Mr. Hader had, probably had staff there. I would, I would consider doing hard cost on this, but not the entire fine.
Supervisor Cox, my understanding is the cost of the machinery and the staff was roughly $2,500. There were eight bins at the dump that were waived at the cost. I would hazard a guess, I don't know how many tons that was, we'd have to have solid waste report to that. But there was tires that county charges $10 per tire. There was, there was some expenses there, yes.
Well, I agree, Supervisor. I mean, if we had not stepped up and done this here, you know, this is a year after the fact, and you see what it would have been.
But this was not an abatement. The county did not go through an abatement on this process.
Thank goodness. I agree with Supervisor Cox that we do have some hard costs that need to be recovered. And I think the issue that we're facing us now is to determine what that amount would be versus the $9,000 in fines. And the other matter is the $300 fee. And my recollection, my memory, it's very rare that we ever waived a $300 fee.
Mr. Chairman, I was waiting for Mr. Ennis to split the baby, since that far-right chair usually picks up the knife and does that.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just be heard for just a moment, I'm Sarah Shayna, appearing here on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Remmer. And I was here a year ago. I want to make sure that it's understood that there may be a miss, there was no refinance of the property. There was a contemplation of a refinance. The financing fell through. And from what I know of this couple's finances, I don't believe that they have the ability to pay the $300, let alone $2,500. I'm not sure how, how the board would, would plan to assess any such fine or hard costs. But whatever costs are contemplated, I would want an opportunity to look at a breakdown rather than respond just standing here to something that, that Mr. Kendall is estimating, so that we could actually, so that my clients can be heard as far as what is being claimed, and then we can arrive at a number that, that is reasonable, and it has been reviewed by their counsel.
Mr. Chairman, if I might respond to that. My only concern is that time is money. We are expending time and energy. I'm not really anxious to continue this matter to another date. In order to do that, I think we should come to a resolution here today. We could just simply leave the $9,000 in place. And the idea is that any kind of reduction that we might give based upon estimates, in my mind, is, I don't have a problem with that, because we have something in place, which would just simply say, you know, we're going, we're going after the $9,300, and we'll put it as a lien on a property, and ultimately, the property would be sold to satisfy the county's lien. So I don't have a problem if, if you all wanted to go out and have a brief discussion about this. But I'm not inclined to want to continue this matter, so that we could spend more time and effort on our staff to come up with some numbers, that your clients can look at them, and then probably not be able to pay it no matter what it is. So that's, this Supervisor's thoughts.
I agree.
I think that's fair. I think not coming back again on this matter would be excellent. But I would like to have an opportunity...
You would, too. I don't know where Mr. Green's coming.
My clients had only just arrived when the matter was called. I haven't even had a chance to speak with them this morning, and it requires two interpreters. I was in the process of trying to get a private room so that we could actually have a conversation when the matter was called.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, why don't we give them 10, 15 minutes to that conversation? But, but it would be my intention to, it sounds like if we cut this in half and made it $4,500, left the $300 fee in place would be, or the filing fee would be $4,800. That would be my intention to support that. So that would give you something to run by them. And I agree with Supervisor Worley that we do have the right to leave the $9,000 fine in place. But we're willing to split the baby, I guess.
I'm sorry. The thing I meant to say when I first started, after I said my name, was that on behalf of my clients, I wanted to express their gratitude, because they do understand that they could not get this done themselves, and they have no family help. If anything, their family has only served to make the matters much worse. So thank you.
If I might clarify something, too. There, the way the code compliance has been developed, there's fees and fines. There is a $1,050 fee that has been paid already. That represents the hard costs the county's paid for my staff to be able to investigate this and take it to hearing.
That has been paid.
That has been paid. And there is also $9,000 in fines that were levied against this property for the violations that were on the property. So that might clarify some of the costs.
I'll take a, very sense, table this, and if you'd say, but how much time do you think you need? 15 minutes? 10 minutes?
I'll do my best to do it in 15. Got to understand with two translators and two clients, it's a lot.
Yes, okay. Well, we'll hold this matter over.
Thank you so much.
You have a conference. We have someone here to win.
What does it always tell me, Supervisor Worley? No good deed goes unfinished.
Ask Oprah Winfrey. Okay, let's move to public comments. Are there any public comments? Please identify yourself and give us your address.
My name's Lali Moreno, and I'm owner of Lali Moreno and Associates. We're consultants. And we are focused on outreach and engagement and implementation of public policy to the Latino community. We had a conference, October, Friday, October 19, at the Visalia Convention Center. And this was our fifth conference for the farmworker women of Tulare County. As you know, these women contribute heavily to the economy of this county. This county, in '07, they generated $3.8 billion. Be like boy, you know that. And these women were contributors to that economy. We have, it's important for me to say this, that we also, as consultants, we contribute about 80% of our time. We do, we do recover some of the costs, like printing and things like that. We had, this year, we had to move to the Visalia Convention Center, because we had 550 women attending, mostly from the rural areas, Cutler Orozco, East Orozco, Sultana, Strathmore, Wood Lake, Poplar, all those areas out there who contribute heavily to the economy. We had several county agencies, first time ever to have very big county participation. That's why I wanted to come over today. We had, first of all, Health and Human Services was absolutely dedicated and committed to making sure that the women had the proper services present. And I wanted to thank John Davis, who is the agency director, who not only helped us with the setting up, but he was also present at the conference. Not too many of the agency directors show up for conferences. They come in and they leave. He was there with us. I wanted to thank Ray Bullock, Dr. Cheryl Duxton, Donnie Griffin, Kevin Marks. And special thanks to Stephen Dubusky, who is the Clinical Services Director. He assured that the proper programs affecting women were there, anywhere, you know, not only to them, but to their families. We had teenage pregnancy, drug and alcohol. We had every single HHSA program appropriate. Then Gilda Sarate Gonzalez, who's the admin specialist, who helped us to coordinate all the workshops. And then, of course, Tulare County Supervisor Connie Conway, who was very generous in her financial support. We used the funding that came in to pay for the 550 women. None of them paid for their food, for registration, for anything. We had sousae catering service they provided, and we ordered the top lunch. And we did that because we have to remember that these women contribute to our economy, making this county sometimes number one. Right now, we're number two. We take turns with other counties. And other county departments that were there, Department of Child Support has been excellent. Every year, they are there. They do intake. They talk to the women who are having problems. They do needs assessment, which I think it's the appropriate arena for them. Then we had, well, I wanted to thank Peggy Anderson, the agency director, and Valerie Semenich, who is her administrative assistant. We had prevention services, drug and alcohol. And we had a staff member, and her name is, I don't know her, but her name is Ida Loehr, L-O-H-R, who was extremely dedicated. Then we had Judge Valerianos of Sedo. The morning session dealt with health issues. The afternoon session dealt with anti-gang, gang prevention. We had Judge Valerianos of Sedo, who was just excellent in his speech. We had the Tulare County Sheriff's Department, Lieutenant Boudreau, Detective Joe Aguilar, and other officers involved with the Anti-Gang Suppression Unit. We provided, we led, a lot of these county agencies came in free. I think maybe John Davis paid for everybody. But we had the DA's Victims Program there, too. Also, free exhibiting space provided for them, and to the University of California Extension Program. And we had, for the third time, the best workshop that they like, that the women like, is the pesticide workshop. And it's provided by the Tulare County Act Commissioner, and in Spanish. And they go through all their signage, you know, as to what it means when they walk into a field and, or in the areas close to the schools. And they really, this is their number-one favorite workshop. And they were there again. And we also, they also had an exhibit of, of things to give away, how to take care of their clothing, how to take care of the children. So I was very proud of that, and I thought I wanted to come and let you know that. We had, oh, my, two minutes up.
Yeah, about two minutes ago.
I know.
We're starting to time it.
No, two minutes, okay. Also, the anti-gang. The women from last year's conference wanted the gang information. And I went to the rural areas with them all this year, because we start planning a year ahead. Like, right now, I'm already doing a weight. And they showed me the rural areas where they have, they're totally controlled by gangs, Poplar, Woodville, all those areas. And I saw them myself. And so we had the, the whole afternoon dedicated. We brought in Officer Rob Zieg from Visalia PD, who has the in-school program. He did an excellent job. We translated all of Visalia PD's materials in Spanish. And as of today, I'm getting requests from different schools, getting this packet from Visalia PD. And also, information that Judge of Sedo... Judge of Sedo brought in and the Sheriff's Department. We had, it was very successful, very successful. They want to have that again, so let's see how it goes. And just one more thing. We had, I know that the supervisors meet with other counties many times. Other counties called. We had calls. Merced County was the number-one calling for help on gang and anti-gang in Spanish. They asked me if they could bring their people over here, and of course, it's costly to us, so I said, I mean, Tulare County cannot pick up everybody. Tulare County had already helped pick up some of Kings County's program people. We had Merced was number-one with calls. We had Monterey County, people from Salinas who were wanting to come. We had Madera. Of course, Fresno was. Fresno wanted to bring in buses. Then we had Kern County, and we had all the way to Coachella, Imperial County. I don't really know how everybody found out, but we did do a Spanish-speaking media outreach. We were on TV and radio, so I'm assuming that they heard us. But there was a lot of interest from Mother County. They're all concerned about the gang in the rural areas affecting the families and taking, I mean, increasing domestic violence, children bringing in guns to their homes. I had to ask them, why do ladies want gang and anti-gang when this is a health conference? And so, I had to learn that too, how it was affecting all the families. So, I just wanted to let you know that there's all these other counties out there. Maybe in the future, we could do a Central Valley, maybe. I don't really know. But Tulare County is pretty well-known for this, and I just wanted the board to know that. And thank John Davis again. And we put a little book together, and here is the county in the first page. And we have Supervisor Conway with her message, and so I just want to thank you very much for that. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Lali. As always, we appreciate your outreach. It's just funny to me that you just don't know where all these people found out about this. How could they possibly know about what was going on?
Good news travels.
That's right.
Hey, let's bring, go into supervisor matters.
I really don't have anything to say this week.
Supervisor Worley.
I don't really have anything I want to say either.
You guys have helped me a lot. Supervisor Cox.
I'll take their time.
The...
What are you going to talk about? Gangs?
Gangs, of course. The Tulare County Gang Task Force has been working very hard on the summit that is set for December 6. We've been finalizing our schedule, our breakout sessions, our speakers. Yesterday, I had a breakfast meeting with Mike Coley and Stan Simpson, and Stan said, well, let's call Jim Tunny and see if we can't get him to commit to come. So, Jim, he got ahold of Jim on the phone, or Tim, yeah, Jim, early in the morning, and he committed to come be our including speaker for the conference. And a very good motivational speaker, he's on a national speaking circuit. He gets tens of thousands of dollars for doing speeches like this, and he's coming on his own dime to do this. Not too many people know, besides his thirty-one years as being an NFL referee, he, prior to that and during that, he was an educator. And down in the central LA area, in his school where he was an educator, there were five active gangs in his school. And so, he's very familiar with the gang culture, with the gang issues, and we're looking forward to have him come down. He's, he said he'll spend the entire day at the conference, going to the sessions, talking to the people, and then he's going to prepare his talk right before he gives it. So, very, very excited to have him come to this. The breakout sessions we have are first class, so we would all benefit from being there. I'm actually, I have registered my children to attend this as well. Would encourage people to go to stepuptc.com where they can register online. And we also, there was a question this week about the cost of the conference, which is twenty-five dollars, and through the generous donations of the chambers of commerce throughout Tulare County, business individuals, and the Board of Supervisors Good Works Funds, we've agreed to cover anybody that cannot afford the cost of the conference, that either one of the sponsorships already provided by the businesses, private industry, chambers of commerce, the cities, would be covered by the Board of Supervisors Good Works. And I really doubt that we'll have to use one penny of our Good Works money because the generosity of the community is becoming very evident. We had another twenty thousand dollars pledged yesterday to support the efforts. And the ultimate goals, I'm taking, I guess I'm into my time now. The ultimate goal of this conference is to create a gang summit in a box, something that we can take, and we can take it to Sultana. We can pick up all the organizations that are involved in the main summit and pick them up and take them to a open house night at school districts and provide all the information that we have here and take that throughout the county. So, it would be appropriate for any schools throughout the county, whether they be in cities or in the unincorporated areas. So, that's one of the ultimate goals, is to get the information to the people and let them know that we're here to help. And yes, we're the government, and we're here to help. But we do bring a lot of good information and good programs into the areas. So, that's the ultimate goal, is to have this summit in a box. We've already started work on a youth gang summit that will be held at the end of the next school year, next year.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Friday, we will have a partnership meeting, California Partnership for the San Juanquin Valley. We'll have its last quarterly meeting of the year in Lodi, which is the home of the, one of the co-chairs, so he's acting as host for our meeting. I know that you all, most of you, attended our annual meeting when it was here in Visaya, so our work continues, and we will be doing some report out and some, a little more intense investigation of the projects that the partnership is, has underway. Last Friday, I attended the, an OPEPS meeting, or Other Pension Employment Benefits Commission meeting. Interestingly enough, it was in downtown Oakland, held at the City Council Chambers. I have to say that as I've traveled up and down the state, it's, when you least expect, when you least expect things, is where you find them. And I mention this simply because next week will be, we will not be having a board meeting because of the annual meeting for the California State Association of Counties, which will be held at the hotel that I stayed in. It's the Mary out there in downtown Oakland. They've done quite a bit of revitalization, very beautiful. But the City Council Chambers, as you walk in, it's one of those old historic buildings that's been preserved. It's marble steps, two or three flights up. Just a very beautiful building and interesting architecture. And I just mention that because of our meeting next week. I will, it will be the waning days of my service as an officer to the California State Association of Counties, and thus, I have the duty of moderating a panel at the Tuesday lunch, which will include Mr. Prada, or Senator Prada, if you will, Assembly Member Nunez, Speaker of the House. I'm not sure what to call him. I guess he's the Attorney General now, former governor, former mayor of Oakland.
Who is a former governor.
Jerry Brown, and the governor. So, lunch on Tuesday should be quite interesting. I don't know how they expect me to keep control of those four personalities. If I said to say, I may need your help, so I hope to see you all there.
Supervisor, I have no doubt that you can handle those three at all.
Well, it should just, it should make for an interesting lunch anyway. So, I thank you for the time, Mr. Chairman. Anyway, that's our CSAC annual meeting next week.
Because of that annual meeting next week, the board, the supervisors is dark. We do not have a meeting next Tuesday. I have the pleasure Sunday of attending the hundredth anniversary of the Visaya Buddhist Church, so we gave them...
How was that?
I'll make this comment, that I repeat the comment, that I very rarely see that many Japanese people in one place other than a funeral.
So, is that your way of telling us the event was a success?
It was a very good... Saturday night, I attended the Tulare County Symphony, and we were, we had a world premiere by Maestro Nino LePore, and it was a tribute to the American fallen soldier. And it was the first time it was ever played in the United States in public. It was a beautiful piece. I wish, you know, we could, I could have had it recorded for the ceremony we're having this Sunday at Veterans Day Fox Theater, but I'm sure people will hear it throughout the United States because he's on tour, and it was a real pleasure for him to premiere it in Visaya. So, we'll probably send him a nice proclamation for that event at a future meeting. I received a call from the Sierra Nevada Conservancy, which I am a board member of, and apparently, we need to submit some more grant applications for the southern Sierra Nevada regions, which is Madera, Fresno, Tulare, and Kern County. There's still quite a bit of money that's available to our southern region, so I encourage the supervisors to talk to their people in their districts that may qualify, and if we can get a little media attention for the mountain people, it would be appreciated. So, with that, that's the end of my comments, and we will go back to the item before us. And Mr. Kendall.
Mr. Chairman, we do now have the total cost involved in this cleanup process. The funds expended for the cost of the dumpsters and transportation was one thousand three hundred eighty dollars. The cost incurred through the redevelopment for the C set and equipment was eight hundred dollars per day. That's the standard rate that they charge. And the...
How many days?
Pardon?
How many days?
Just one day. The cleanup actually went over one and a half day. They had to clean up, take one bin back to the dump later on, but that did not involve C set. And then, the cost of the fees for the solid waste disposal was one thousand four hundred five dollars and ninety cents for a total of three thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars and ninety cents.
Counsel, do you have any comment?
No, I don't, other than what I've said earlier. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Anybody else wishing to address this matter, please come forward. Okay. Seeing, seeing no one coming forward, would your clients like this?
I don't think so. I've expressed their gratitude, and also the fact that they're on social security and don't have any way of paying a lump sum. I've tried to explain to them what a lien is, and we just leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to close the public hearing, bring you back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I snuck over to ask a question of our CEO a moment ago. Normally, in the course of a lien, the lien would draw a legal interest rate, if I'm not mistaken, of ten percent per annum. And my concern for these folks, based upon their financial ability, is that I know the board is going to want to try to recover our costs, but if we include the interest on that, it would probably consume any kind of payments they might be able to make. I would like to see us recover our costs but waive the interest in the interest of what's fair for these folks so that they might be able to actually be able to pay us back.
You read my notes, didn't you?
No, I didn't read your notes. I must have read your mind.
And that scares me.
If there's no further discussion, I would motion to reduce the fine to three thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars and ninety cents and keep in place the three hundred dollar filing fee for a total of three thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars and ninety cents, waive interest, and allow partial payments.
Could I be heard on that? I just want to make sure I understand what partial payments are, because I don't know that they have any ability to pay anything on an ongoing basis.
It is what it is. Allow partial payments. If they want to make a twenty dollar payment, they can make a twenty dollar payment. If they want to make a thousand dollar payment, they can do that, just to allow partial payments.
And meanwhile, it's secured by the lien.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay.
I would second the motion.
There's been a motion, it's been seconded. All in favor? Oh, I forget about that. Push the button. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our regularly scheduled agenda. Counsel, do we have need for closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you do. Items A through C, as indicated on your board's closed session agenda, I do anticipate an announcement.
Thank you. Thank you for attending today.
I was supposed to say thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Have the right access to that.
Okay. Announcement out of closed session today, November 6, 2007 by County Council Kathleen Bales-Lang. In regard to Item B, the board voted to reappoint Kathleen Bales-Lang as county council for another four-year term commencing today, November 6, 2007, ending November 6, 2011. There are no other announce-- oh, I'm sorry, on motion of Supervisor Worthley seconded by Supervisor Conway on a unanimous vote, there are no other announcements. And I have a resolution for you.
Let me get it.